Let the record indicate Commissioner Altman Dillinger present. Commissioner Everett cannot be with us today. Our first item, if you'll stand for the plates, please.
...to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize to you for our late arrival. We had an executive session that went over a little bit. First item on the agenda is to approve the executive session that we ended from September the 3rd and September the 9th.
So.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is to approve the minutes of August 26th.
So.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Just have two quick items for you. Under agreements, supplements. First one is a landscape agreement that the city officials. It's been a while trying to get this through them or from them. And this is for the landscaping that they've done in the medians on the south end of Oleo Road and then some there at Mirella Road by White River. So they've already done the landscaping. This is the agreement that goes with what they've done and would recommend approve it. So outlines who's responsible for the landscaping and what would happen with that.
Why are we doing this in hindsight?
Because they went ahead and did it without.
Well, it's already gone through their council and such.
Yes.
But next ones, if there's liability because of their landscaping and sight lines, whoever's done the landscaping should bear that responsibility and liability. And it was sculpted in that. So the next one, just so make a policy that has that liability. Because there can be, we could be liable because the vegetation was too tall and they were supposed to take that.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Second thing I have in agreement is with our uniform service. This is the same, sent to us as the same service we've had before. This is up for renewal.
Move to approve.
And we're using the state PPA.
Second, discussion.
Their pricing.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have for you.
Next item on the agenda is willing to grounds. Steve Wood, Mr. Here. We'll come back to that probation. Madonna?
I'm actually here for Madonna. Krista Bracken. This is an authorization for meal expense. We have a team administration meeting on October 29th that we would like to get, provide a meal for our team of 22.
I would approve with a cost not to exceed 500.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
In fact, we thought I'd just tell them like a per diem cost not to exceed. So please, if you do that, then we'll. Chick-fil-A for everyone.
Next item on the agenda is Hammond County Express. Todd Woburn.
Good afternoon. As you recall, we, the county, published an RFP for county transit, public transit services. And we received one response from Genus Developmental Services. And we have reviewed the response and their proposal, and we recommend it for approval.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion. All in favor? Aye, motion carries.
Is Ross still with James?
He is there until the end of September.
Oh, I didn't know.
And then they hired a young lady from New Jersey, I believe, Ashley. She started already, so.
Thank you, Donna. Hammond County Health Department, Jason LaMaster.
Good afternoon. This is what's in your packet. I have a request for approval to enter a memorandum of understanding with Riverview Hospital for storage and handling of vaccines. This is a MOU that we've maintained for years with them. We just got the language updated. And this is part of our emergency plans that we do. So we were wanting to get that refreshed with them.
Are we going to do anything with COVID through the health department or not?
Well, we are still getting all of that because again, with the COVID vaccines being commercialized and everything like that, I think we just got some in, but I'm not sure exactly what all is in right now yet.
Okay, but are we going to have any clinics or just made it available?
I think it's just going to be basically available.
Okay. I'd move to approve the contract.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I see Mr. Wood is in the audience. Let's digress back to him.
You didn't know he grew up Warp Street, did you?
I was kind of shocked, by the way.
Well, hairbraids up here.
He wasn't here to slow it down? Okay. I'm bringing for you a contract extension. With Dyken, we have added on nine pieces of equipment. That's through these special projects. This is full maintenance contract, parts and service. The only thing it does not include is free on. It's compressors. Those type of items are all covered underneath this contract. It's for three years, if you so wish. We've put, talked to several companies with us. This is just their equipment that we have this contract with, which have the judicial, the old courthouse, the health department now, jail complex, women's jail side of it, juvenile side as well.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Community Bevola Block Grant. Michelle West.
Good afternoon. I have a couple items for you guys today. The first item is a request for approval of the CDBG funding agreement for the Noblesville Southwest Broad Sidewalk Project. The CDBG amount going into the project was, or will be, $110,726.24.
Is there a motion?
There's one little issue. Check your contract.
Are you making a motion to that person?
Move to approve, yeah.
Second, discussion.
It looks like it was double sided or something odd, but page 17 then goes in 18, 19, then it goes to 21, 22.
Oh, okay.
Seems like we're missing something.
Okay.
Just double check if you would before you send it in.
Okay, thank you. All right. The second item is a request for approval.
All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay.
Second item is request for approval of the environmental review, the section 106 environmental review, and tribal consultation request for the development project at, it's 1488 Greenfield Avenue, acquisition by hand.
Move to approve, but I.
You mean a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Second, discussion.
And again, on these things, when it comes to us, we don't know where on the face of the earth it is. So when maps are included, please make sure that the roads are identified in those maps. So we know, and I think it'll make the approval process go faster.
Understood.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And the last item, which is a public hearing and presentation regarding the pro housing grant application we are working on to submit to HUD. So as you may recall, we did apply for this grant last year. The previous round, actually, that HUD received way more applications than they had anticipated. Had over 175 applications. They awarded 21 grants. This year, they have upped the amount that is available to 100 million is what is available for the pro housing program. We can request up to 700, or no, we can request up to 7 million for the application. So for this round, our application currently, we will be requesting $6,955,084.
And we would use this money to leverage what the county's already invested.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then I guess we'll need to open it up for public comments as a public hearing.
There's a public hearing on the grant report?
On the, as part of the application process, we are required to do a public hearing.
Okay, in that case, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Does anybody care to address this issue? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward up to the microphone. State your name and address with a record, if you would, please.
My name is Trudy Weddington. I live at 23402 Mule Barn Road in Sheridan. I'm here today. I read through the proposed draft that I found online for this, and I had a couple of questions. It specifically references a Baker's Corner property as a place to use for the model to start the land bank trust. Where is the property located?
Do you want to answer that?
I don't know the exact address.
No, I think it's, well, it's just west of Dunbar Road and I believe it's 241st Street.
246, CJ says.
It is 246? Okay.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make certain of.
67 acres, net usable is about 50.
I believe two parcels.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. I wanted to make sure because the proposed draft did not state that that was the property. And so now that I know that it is, I'll continue with my questions. Or statements, perhaps, if this, you can mark down what perhaps you might want to address. Or statements, perhaps, if this, you can mark down what perhaps you might want to address. I'm wondering, why was the property chosen? Currently, it's zoned as agricultural in the Unified Development Ordinance. And then, I have more. The larger parcel has a clump of wooded trees, woods, in the lower southwest corner. I don't know the acreage of that, but maybe an eighth of the property, if I had to guess. So maybe, I don't know, I'm just guessing. How would the woods be treated on that property? Are they going to be clear cut to take advantage of the land that they're on?
Why don't you go through your questions, and I'll address.
That's, that's. Well, that's what I'm doing, so that's why I'd ask if you could take.
Questions, and I'll hit.
Yeah, I am. So again, the woods. You see where trees are torn down every day for new developments and property, and I'd hate to see those go. My third thing here, as to why was this property chosen? Approximately at a 45-degree angle running from south to northeast is the county drainage ditch, the Jones Ditch. And I believe it runs northeast based on the fact that it terminates at the property to the west of this parcel. That ditch, I can't imagine that you would want to fill it in. Drainage is an issue with clay soil in our township, Adams Township. So is there plans to prevent runoff issues? Are filter strips going to be put into place along the ditch to perhaps take care of any sediments or chemicals that might run into the ditch? And then also, that ditch, if you look at the zoning maps, the Hamilton County website, and I didn't look on the federal maps, so I hope nothing has changed. That entire ditch is noted as a Zone A flood zone by the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program. That means it's basically not been studied to determine how much flooding you may or may not have there in 100- or 500-year flood events. And usually, when there is development on a property that contains a Zone A flood zone that has not been studied, it is a requirement that it be studied before development can take place to determine, again, base flood elevations for the area that you would be building, perhaps houses, buildings, what other infrastructure, I'm not sure. Because you certainly won't want to build your buildings, have to pay flood insurance because you didn't build them at the correct elevation. And you certainly wouldn't want to have your base flood elevation of your building to be lower than what the anticipated 100- or perhaps even 500-year flood event would be. So those three natural areas are of concern for the property. As I said, it's already zoned ag, so my number five point of why was this property selected? It is in the middle of farmland. It doesn't abut, it's not adjacent, it's approximately a mile north of any clumped-together housing, like Baker's Corner is. On all four sides, it's fields. It seems like an odd spot to plop down a multifamily housing development. I don't know. Number six. If this is being used to create affordable housing rental units for those in the low, extremely low, or moderately low income brackets of Hamilton County, why is it out in the middle of nowhere? If I didn't have a lot of money, I would not want to live out in the country where I'm going to have to have a reliable car to get me to work. And in terms of radius of jobs, Sheridan doesn't have a lot to offer, unfortunately. Maybe we're working on that someday. The next closest would be Westfield, which is going to be probably a 15-minute drive. That's a lot in terms of gas money, wear and tear on the cars, and the brakes, and the oil, which are all expenses that a low, very low-income family maybe wouldn't be able to afford over time. And then also, with it being in the middle of nowhere, this is probably intended for families because I noticed in the report, one of the biggest concerns was for single-family, or excuse me, single-parent, usually mothers with children, one, two to three children. She's doing it all on her own. There is little to no daycare nearby. She would probably have to take the kids with her when she went to work and then drop them off on the way. Could be done. I've done it before. But then, in terms of socialization for the children, they're out there all by themselves, but I guess they'd be just playing with the other family kids in the development. And in terms of riding bikes, they're not in a necessarily subdivision-specific area. You've got tractors that are going to be surrounding the property, they're a working field. Young kids, even teenagers, like to wander off. I would hate to see them wander into a farm production area where the tractors aren't looking for them and somebody gets hurt. I'd hate to see them wander out into a small cornfield, or short corn that's been planted after anhydrous has been put on, and wander into those chemicals. The anhydrous, even though it's knifed into the ground, it doesn't all go directly into the ground. It stays on top also. Oh, and then I mentioned bicycles. 246th Street is, I forget the actual terminology that you used, but it's a fairly major thoroughfare, a connector road, I believe. It's not some 20 mile an hour road. It may be after the development goes into place, maybe you'd regulate it to 45 or something, I'm not sure. Right now, it's a zoom-fast 55 mile an hour road. Again, kids. So why was it selected? And then my second point is the amount of money that was spent per the parcel. You had mentioned it was 67 plus or minus acres. The one parcel, the smaller one, is 6.25 acres. And it has a value, according to the property records on January of 2024, of $15,500. Granted, I know that's not what you could buy it for in today's market. A small building lot would get you quite a lot on six acres. If you sold it just by the acreage for farm field, you'd maybe get $15,000 an acre if it was being sold as farm field. Parcel two, the larger one, has 61.17 acres with a January of 2024 valuation of $129,500. Again, I realize that's very low considering today's market.
Excuse me, what is your point with this?
I'm making it, I just.
Let me back up because I was signing some papers. Did you state your name and address?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I stated my, you said.
Again, I'm sorry.
You said you wanted me to state the address where I lived, right, my residence, and that was what I stated.
What's your name?
Trudy Weddington. W-E-D-D-I-N-G-T-O-N. Trudy, T-R-U-D-Y.
Okay, thank you.
And the residence, again, is on Mule Barn Road, 23402 in Sheridan, which I know is a good five, six miles from this property. You didn't ask why I was concerned about it, other than perhaps it may not be the best parcel. Within sight distance, I own a farm of 20, give or take, it's less than, maybe it's about 15, because we have done some developments to that property, within sight distance of this property. So my interest is that it's near the property that I own and that we use for farming. And right now, what we have our farm set in is set aside with the USDA Conservation Reserve Program. It doesn't last forever, but it's coming due soon as far as when we can choose to re-up or turn it back into farm ground.
Were there any other specific concerns you had about what this grant request is on the property?
No, I don't mind what the grant request is, but the property is, like I said, why is it here? And so I started looking.
If there's any.
I'm about to finish my last and final, my seventh point. I was concerned about, from a taxpayer's standpoint, how much was spent on it. Approximately, let's see, 2.36 million for the one parcel and 2.36 million for the other parcel, puts this at a hefty, if I did my math right, little bit more than $5 million for 65 acres of farmland that would need substantial infrastructure development. I got this figure off of Gateway Information for property values, or property sales in Hamilton County.
Well, your information is incorrect.
And then how much was spent?
It was $2,345,000. It was 35,000 per acre.
Okay, that's not as bad, then. But then, that brings me back to the infrastructure development, where, why was this picked? And I looked at the previous owner, Margaret and John Duro Trust. John has passed. Margaret is still alive. And I also found that she is a very, very involved person in the Hamilton County Republican Party and the Hamilton County Women's Club of the Republican Party. And I know you'd spent some time looking and trying to find someone who would agree to sell their property. That was said in one of the commissioner's minutes notes earlier this year, perhaps late last year. No one came to me and asked me if I would sell my property. As far as I know, the neighbor across the road on Dar Town Road, no one asked them either. I'm wondering how many people were asked. A lot of time when government does things, you have to request several bids and choose the lowest bid and/or the one that meets your needs. So I just, I question not the housing program, but the choice of this particular plot.
Okay, we'll address that, okay?
Okay. Well, you said you wanted me to finish all my concerns, and that was it.
Okay, good. The selection, we spent probably five months looking for property. We put it open, offered out to realtors, if they could come up with a parcel about this size. We were very pleased. And in fact, the Duro family actually took a reduction in price at 35, given what's going on with the Surr project out there. So we feel very comfortable with the 35,000 and think they were generous in their donative attempt. Your question as to why this parcel is selected, we're putting a sewer district in that area. We want to run lines to have service to as far as we can within that, and this is a long, direct service line that's intended for expansion. You asked about the trees in the corner of the parcel. If you would review the deed under which the county took the parcel, it's specifically reserved, and we are prohibited from disturbing the trees other than to clear them for safety reasons, low hangars, etc.
Very good.
That was very important to the family. And for housing projects, we thought it was very important for kids to have green space and places to play.
I agree.
And then you asked about the regulated drain. Before we acquired the parcel, we had regulated drain, the tree area fully served. And that's part of the reduction in that acreage because we were aware of the regulated drain and the corresponding floodways that we would not be able to develop. We anticipate that we will make that amenity to the parcel, and of course, we would have to have permission from Drainage Board to do anything else. Any project we are requiring county-wide that groundwater be detained before it's released into the regulated drain, that will be part of this project, just as any other developer would have to do.
Retention ponds?
Retention or oversized pipe. Lots of ways to accomplish it.
And then how would you prevent runoff going directly into the ditch?
It's collected, you're going to have some sheeting, but natural, it will go to a natural area to pool and then discharged at a regulated rate.
You'd still have the top of the ditch, though, somehow?
It would be connected. It'd be a reconstruction to that.
Okay.
No need to worry. Your other question was, I think you have a misunderstanding as to why this parcel was acquired. It's going to be the first in a land trust, primarily because the land trust is a vehicle to use to manage the property, like an association. And also, what it does is allows us, or whoever the land trust, to retain those housing units in perpetuity with whatever constraints we have, income or occupation.
I agree with that part.
And then.
But that can be done anywhere.
Correct. But this parcel, I mean, the intent is not low-income housing. That is not why it was acquired. The reason why this parcel was acquired is number one, to try to figure out how to build housing stock less expensively, make sure it's maintained, and also provide an area for people, public service, your teachers in Sheridan, our lower paid employees, our firemen, our police officers, public service people, to be able to afford to live in Hamilton County and have a home. So that was the purpose of this parcel.
And there are several, I know personally, teachers, public service, police, fire, what have you, that do live in Adams Township, and they didn't require a special managed rental unit to do so. They own homes.
Good for them, but there's a lot of our employees that can't afford to live in this county.
In the county, but not Adams Township, which is where.
I explained why this parcel was selected. Because it marries off with a sewer project we've got going. It provides customers for that and affords the extension of lines that are going to extend it in. I think I have hit all of it.
No, the one was fields, what kind of buffers might be put around the edges of the property, prevent the children from playing in the fields. I know they run loose. I grew up in the company, the country rural farming area myself, Michigan. Things happen. And then also.
You said about parental supervision, which I feel strongly about.
It doesn't always happen.
Understood, but there's a very, you bear responsibility when you have children, and that's part of it. And any place that's being developed in Hamilton County is zoned ag. I mean, that's where your available stock is.
Is zoned what?
Agriculture.
So there's no other property that can be used for this except agriculture? So there's no other property that can be used for this except agricultural, is what you're saying?
Open ground, where else are you gonna find sixty-seven acres of open ground?
There's a lot of open ground in a lot of places. It doesn't have to come out of agriculture, and.
But we were unfortunately unable to locate anything else.
And then going to the fact that it is zoned agricultural, in the uniform.
Be rezoned, probably in a planned unit development, to afford the density and the amenity if we want to.
And then, in reading the U D O, I, from memory here, I didn't bring a copy of it with me, it, it states that you're not supposed to change the area in which the planned unit development or the rezoned parcel already exists. And it does speak to the fact that agriculture is agriculture. It, it's not like it's next to a single-family housing unit, or next to a multifamily, or apartments, or, or something like that.
I'm not qualified to answer that, Mr. C J Taylor, who currently is sitting back there, would be more than happy to talk to those, those factors. So, I'm just not qualified to.
Oh, no, that's fine. Like I said, these are just all questions I have, it's, it's like plop it down in the middle of the farm. Didn't make sense. And he, Taylor?
Do you want me to come up there now, or do you want me to?
No, just, this doesn't have to happen in this meeting, we've heard her concerns for the record. I think I've tried to address as many as I personally can.
Okay.
C J's available to talk to you about our zoning code, to help you with the other things that he can.
Okay, so, will there be other public hearings on this, or no?
This is purely for the grant process, to see if we can garner additional funds to help with the process needs of creating, establishing, tenable housing in Hamilton.
Just to kinda add to that, um, I do have my rough schedule outlined. Um, the application has to be submitted to HUD by October fifteenth. So backing up from them, I intend to come to you guys at your regularly scheduled meeting on the thirtieth of September to do that final presentation. Um, it is not required that we do a public hearing for that, but certainly we can, obviously, we'll, you know, see if there's issues. But yeah, that, that's my tentative schedule.
I'm gonna move to table this, cause I think it needs to wait till work gets here.
Well, no, it's a public, you can close the public.
I'm, I'm gonna close the public hearing, I'm just saying this for your benefit and hers. Are we finished? Have you said everything you need to say?
Uh, those were my points, was there anybody else that wanted to speak to it?
Well, that's my job.
I mean.
I didn't wanna cut anybody else off by making my questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion to say it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna make a table and motion, because I think this needs to be addressed while Mark is here.
Well, that, that's fine, cause we just had the public hearing, and we can either adopt or not adopt.
I don't think you had to adopt anything today for this, correct?
Correct.
It was just a public hearing.
Yeah.
It's not that you don't adopt anyways.
Yeah, but we already made a motion, did you not?
Well, I made a motion to accept the grant for purposes of public hearing. I didn't, I'll withdraw that if it makes you wrong.
Yeah.
Is that the way it should be handled?
Yeah, so if you, if there was something that you needed to take action on after the public hearing, but Michelle Kirk, if I'm wrong, say it's just a public hearing, she comes back to you, she takes the public hearing, any comments, concerns, anything you guys discussed, she can.
Cause I didn't realize.
So are you gonna come back at our next meeting, two weeks from then?
I can, certainly.
Well, I think you have it on your, you have it on your thin right here, it says.
On the, on the thirtieth, I'll be.
Yeah, it's, it's not the next meeting, it's.
Ah, yeah. It is, yeah, I will be here.
A I C.
Oh, A I C, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Hamilton County Surveyor, Kim Ward.
Do you know anything about this county?
You don't look like Kim Ward.
I don't think so.
Well, you're a good try.
You're a lot better looking here.
I'm not Kim Ward. I'm Tim Knapp with the County Highway, that was, uh, trying to acquire some easement for this county surveyor. I believe he brought it before you at the Drainage Board Meeting this morning. Uh, we have one parcel on part, the Mary Wilson Regulated Drain, that the time period has expired on their offer. Uh, they do intend to sign the, the document, uh, once the public hearing is complete, September thirtieth. Uh, they are willing to sign everything, but they wanna make sure there is an official project before they sign off on giving up their easement. Um, yeah, so we are bringing it, just in case that doesn't happen, that we can start the process of condemnation, but more than likely this is gonna be settled.
That would be best.
Yeah.
But in the interest of being conservative, to keep the project moving, I would move to place it on the list of condemnations.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Emergency Management Agency, my gift, or helps, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I think it's a misprint. Been more than happy working there, wherever you desire.
Wherever you're with, Mike.
Yes, sir.
You, you want some money for food, right?
Yes, sir, uh, we initiated the location dispatch project this past weekend successfully, and we did provide food for all the workers onsite, so, the request before you use the receipt.
So moved.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner, committee reports.
We did have an E nine-one-one, uh, executive board meeting this morning. Basically, it reviewed the budget that's been submitted to council, it's already on the hearings. Um, we have, or in the process of negotiating with Motorola, Motorola, um, what's called the Cork Project, which would allow him to kind of have its own internal, um, ability to accept and receive calls currently through, um, under agreement with Marion County, who has their core. They indicated that they would not object to us to have our own redundant core, and we feel it's in the best interest of the county to make sure we have that, um, backup and ability to perfectly control that. And it also gives us capacity, should Madison County want to join, etc., to make it a regional dispatcher if people are interested.
Okay. Uh, we also had a, uh, interest committee meeting, uh, with Rury Hospital, our pharmacy, to get an update on it, it's going extremely well. They are considering, uh, changing in the same location, uh, office space for the, the clinic. Uh, that is not finalized yet, but they're wanting to use some of that space for a physician that's coming in, they have plenty of space, so, they'll, they'll get back with us on that. But other than that, the clinic is going extremely well right now. Anything else? Seeing none, Mr. Turner.
Yes, thank you, I have two items for you today, one is for a contract for professional services between Hamilton County and, and Dan Stevens. He will be assisting the county in all of our vertical capital projects. Um, the contract will begin in October. Dan is enjoying the last couple days before, in his retirement form, we bring him back as a consultant. So I have that today for your review and approval today.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most carries.
The, uh, the next item I have is just a, a trust liability claim. Um, as you are aware, the Donnie, um, family, I guess, has been quite litigious. Um, they are in a lawsuit right now with the landowner, the Wright family. Uh, but as part of that lawsuit, Kenton Ward was deposed, and Adam Wolfon represented for that, and we have court reported there. Um, and so I have the, uh, expense for two, two hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-five cents to be paid on a trust liability. Um, it would typically, this would not come before you, uh, just since it's not part of an active lawsuit for us, but could impact other ones that's not tied to any lawsuits, so we can't submit as a claim to Steven and his team, so that's why it's coming before you today, I just wanted to provide that explanation for you guys.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most carries.
And that is all, thank you.
Thank you. Our mask administrator, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. The S R L I was today, first off, presenting for your review, approval, and ultimately, I'm to obtain, to obtain the signature of Commissioner Fair Grant, who is the designated representative with respect to the, um, S R F disbursement Form process. But I have a S R F disbursement Form related to the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four invoice, which is invoice number five, two, three, one, zero, gap, zero, four, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirteen cents from Reynolds Construction LLC for equipment, materials, and construction-related services, uh, for the U S thirty-one Bakersfield Corner, Hamilton County Regional Utility District project.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most carries.
And I'll hang on to that and obtain Mark's signature either, I don't know if he's coming later today or tomorrow, and get that to you. Uh, item number two, I'm presenting for your review, discussion, approval, and signature. Uh, Hamilton County Superior Court Two, Judge John Brown has requested the Board of Commissioners sign a resolution in support of the Hamilton County Judiciary's request for the establishment of two new courts with corresponding judges and for two additional magistrate positions. Copy of the judge's request to the Indiana Legislature with supporting document, documentation, uh, was provided, and you have that for your review. Uh, John Brown, uh, is also here, if you do have any questions of him prior to signing the, uh, resolution that I have here for you.
I do not, it was very well documented, I'm asking you to approve.
Second. Is there a possibility that you all could, uh, just ask for one judge, one magistrate?
We don't, we're not sure what the legislature's going to give us.
Yeah?
At this point, um.
She's gonna need.
Yes, this is Judge Brown, Superior Court Two, sorry.
Sorry, she's gonna need.
That's all right. Well, it goes where I said my name a bunch of times anyway, so, that's all right. Um, we know where our need is right now, and from what, uh, Mr. Jeter told us, is that we need to ask for what we need. Um, that's what we're trying to do. I think even if they give us four judges next spring, I think we're still short. And.
Where are we gonna put four judges next spring?
We're not gonna have them next spring. As the proposal indicates, that the idea would be that you'd have two judges that would, two of the, the elected judges wouldn't, the election would occur in spring and fall of twenty twenty-six, so they wouldn't take office until January of twenty-seven, so that's two and a half years from now. Um, the magistrate positions, we still have to, depends on when the legislature would give them to us. We don't know if it would be next summer, or if it wouldn't be until January of twenty-six. We're really kind of stuck in a, in a spot where we don't know what they're going to give us, what they're gonna be willing to give us. Um, there is a, a movement downtown with respect to counties that have not, their judges don't have enough work. So ideally, they have this weighted caseload study, it was created by the state, and the goal is that a judge would do one judge's worth of work. Our judges are doing one and a half judge's worth of work. We are the county with the highest amount of need. There was, there is an error in the document that I submitted to you folks. We had estimated that the number of cases by year end would be twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety cases, and we're on, now on track for twenty-eight thousand, two hundred cases. Um, our, our weighted, our, our caseloads using, our, our need was a seventeen point two judges at the end of June. As of, after the August filings, we were at seventeen points, six, seven judges. So even if we get four, we're at seventeen, and that's today. By the time we get to the legislature next spring, this is at the committee level, we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be making an ask of them. Our feeling is, is they're not gonna give us four, we think that we're gonna be back doing this same process two years from now, asking for more judges. They, they just did the new weighted caseload study, that's what, they, they did that back in February, March. They've been dealing with the numbers of that, uh, over the past several months. They're supposed to reveal them next week at the Judicial Conference. And I've seen those numbers, at least the draft numbers, I haven't seen the official version. But if you wanna know how many judges that we would need to meet the current, uh, using current, with the, the new weighted caseload numbers, you're probably looking at three more above that. And that's today. So I mean, we are short, and so when I have, when I first came on here eight years ago, if you wanted a jury trial, there may be, we were in four, five deep, and you probably could have your jury within a year. I scheduled juries today for a case, we're running nine, ten, eleven juries deep, and I'm a year and a half out. And it's just getting worse. So we, we know this problem isn't getting better, and I appreciate the idea that maybe have a one and one. That may be good, but from the state side, they don't really care whether it's a judge or it's a magistrate. It doesn't really impact, and our proposal, and I, I addressed this last week with the council. We oftentimes have, every time we add a court, well, there's, we gotta have a court reporter, anytime, even if you add a magistrate, you have to have a court reporter. Where everything kinda gets a little bit sideways is this idea, well, we add a court, so, an elected judge, so we have to add two deputy prosecutors, and we have to add this many probation officers, and we have to do this, and we have to do that. We're already adding those people on a year-over-year basis without the addition of a court. The prosecutor comes in here and says, hey, I need people that are gonna do X, Y, and Z. The prosecutor doesn't tie his hands and say, you know what? I'm not gonna ask for another soul to work in this office until we get another elected judge. And probation doesn't do that either, like, we have to address the problems we have. And so we, the, that attack, and, and so where we ended up after last, after the meeting last week was, that exhibit in the, um, it's exhibit four, I think, is in, in the packet, kinda gives you a ballpark, any of these costs, that go along with the extra personnel. But these personnel aren't tied on to a court, and plus, if we, where we really need the help is on the civil side. Well, if you have a, if we designate that when that court comes on, that, that elected judge is gonna have a civil docket, they don't need deputy prosecutors, they don't need any probation people. But it doesn't matter anyway, because those departments are already asking for those people, regardless of what, whether or not you have another elected judge or another magistrate in the building. They, they don't go hand in hand as, as well they, as well as they used to, and with the design, I mean, I've seen the, the structure point designs for what the expansion should look like. We're not designing this building to look like what the second and third floors currently look like. We're not adding exact-sized courtrooms with those exact kind of spaces. We're adding some different-sized courtrooms to deal with different-sized matters. We're looking at, you know, personnel are gonna end up being shared in some shape, way, or form. Mr. Alexander asked me last week, is that something we anticipate? Yeah, we do, because I think that the new space is gonna dictate it. You're gonna have a lot of people that are associated with the courts in kind of similar type spaces, and over the next, you know, ten to twenty years, it's gonna change how we utilize our personnel in this building. I mean, it's, it's fascinating, exciting, it's stressful, it's a whole lot of different things. But I mean, we're, the judiciary and what happens in this building with respect to the courts, it's gone through a lot already, just in the past couple of years with COVID and remote hearings and, and everything else that we do.
Yeah, if we don't, if we don't keep up, and we're not keeping up, I mean, even with two, we're not keeping up.
We're not.
It's a huge disservice to me, not only to the judges, but more importantly, to our constituents that we serve. Because it is not good to have matters pinned and not have resolution for people that have disputes or problems. And the fewer judges we have, the longer it takes to get through the system, and the more stress and the more strife that we put our people through. So, I'd be happy to ask for four, cause even if I don't have space for them with individual offices, you guys can figure it out, as long as you got a fence and a reporter to keep the flow going.
Exactly, and, and, and I understand your point, um, Mr. Dillinger. I think that the, you know, this idea that we could get one and one, and I think we'll be just lucky to get two judges. to get two judges anyway. Do I think that's what we're gonna end up with? Probably, that won't surprise me. I think, Mr. Jeter indicated, the most he's seen the county get in one term is two. Maybe this is an exception, I don't know, but there's also discussions downtown where they're not, the legislature's not wanting to necessarily add judges. They're talking about reallocating. Well, in order to reallocate, they gotta do it on a schedule, because, you know, the statute shows, for example, I think it's the last exhibit in your packet, well, as you create courts, you just add, like Superior, Hamilton Superior Eight, Hamilton Superior Nine. Well, those can be taken away by just a strike through, and that's the bill that gets pushed through to the, to the House. But you're gonna have a lot of pushback from the smaller counties, where they don't have enough work, but they've got extra judges, I mean, there's some judges that are working two and three days a week. That is not here. And so, you know, we're already getting a little bit of feedback from some folks, and they're saying, well, you guys in Hamilton County probably aren't gonna be liked very well by the counties in Southern Indiana. I can't create a caseload for the counties in Southern Indiana, I just am trying to deal with the caseload we have. And, and so that's just where we're at, if there was, I wish there could be a rosier picture to provide, but it's just, we just don't have one to provide to at this point, so.
We have a motion, a second, is that right? All in favor?
Aye.
I have most carries.
We really appreciate you guys' support, we know we can't do this stuff without you. Also, Ms. Altman, with your respect to your, how you dealt with Ms. Weddington's comments, I thought it was great, so, well done. Well done, you were very well prepared.
I think I learned something about drainage, I was gonna say.
Okay, item number three, presented for your review, consideration, appointment, and the signature of the commissioners, I have a request that is made by Melissa Loizel, Library Director of Hamilton East Public Library, to reappoint Susan Crandall to the Hamilton East Library Board. Susan Crandall's appointment to the board just expired at the end of August. Miss Crandall is willing to be reappointed, and has completed the online application for board appointment with the county. I need a motion and a vote on the reappointment of Susan Crandall to the Hamilton County East Public Library, and then if approved, I need your signatures on this state appointment form.
Your motion.
Yes, there is, and I thank her for serving and coming in.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I have most carries. You want to send this here? I believe Susan is an excellent board member, I mean, she's an author, she cares about this community, she grew up in the community, her family is all familiar with this community, and I think she's done a really good job.
That's what I've heard, and I thank her for that.
The next item I have, actually, item number four, I'm striking. Item number five, I'm presenting for your review, consideration, VOC approval, and the signature of either the president or designated, I have a request made by Jason LaMester, Director of the Hamilton Health Department, for the approval of a grant agreement for Breathe Easy Hamilton County in the amount of $15,000. I'm standing, they're going to be working on a mobile smoking prevention cessation and education trailer, and Jason just needs you to sign off on the grant agreement.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I have most carries. That's it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
I don't have anything for the group, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And a monitor.
I'm not the report from the Superior Circuit Court, you jump, line 31st, you go.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I have most carries.
Liability trust, total expenditure to report to August 24th.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I have most carries.
Payroll claims?
Move to approve.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I have most carries. Second, discussion, all in favor? I have most carries. We will move to the back room to continue our work session, if you'd like to join us. Other than that, we will close the public meeting here. Thank you.